Order, this is school committee meeting October 19th, 2023. Dennis, will you lead us in the pledge?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands alone nation under God, in the resolve of liberty and justice for all.
Here.
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 Moving on to the report of the school committee chair. Really, I just want to clear up some things. I keep hearing that we're paying two superintendent salaries. The fact is, Mr. Hashem, who by the way is doing a fantastic job, is getting paid his teacher's salary and a stipend. We're also seeing savings as we're not paying the deputy superintendent or communications director. As a board, we take the town and school budget very seriously. It would never do anything to, we would never do anything that isn't in the best interest of the students and the taxpayers of Saugus. So, we really care about it. So, at the end of the day, we're pretty happy where we're at. So, I just wanted to clear that up. I also want to speak to the fact that this committee here, we're really solutions-based, right? I think anyone can tell you what problems are. It takes, you know, a committee that works together and it takes leaders to solve those problems, right? There was traffic at the high school, middle school, we got a police officer out there, right? Just little things. Yeah, we have a busing issue. We work together, we got another bus. Communication people talked about maybe was lacking. We brought in a communication superintendent. We're working on getting parents their own Aspen X2 accounts. And us as a board, we can always be reached by phone, email. We're willing to answer questions. We run, it's a volunteer position, and we want run because first of all, I think we love the town, we care about it, we care about the people in it. And we really want to improve the district and move it forward. So, we're always looking at things like that. So, if you have an issue, if there's a problem, bring it to us because sometimes we don't know about it, right? And I think together collectively as a district, not as a school committee, not as an administration, not as a faculty, as a district together, we work to solve these problems. I mean, there's little things that we work together on and there's big things we work together on, but at the end of the day, we as a committee are here because we care. And that's all I really wanted to say. I don't know if you guys have anything you want to throw in.
I just, if I could, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
No, I appreciate what you said and I do also want to point out the fact that about communication and atmosphere, if you will, Mr. Hashem has done an amazing job with these meetings. When you look at my private job, what I do every day is be concerned about employee engagement and corporate culture. And to see the atmosphere of the buildings, this meeting, the dramatic change that is taking place in a short time, I think shows the direction that we're moving into. And it also shows, because of events of the past that we're dealing with and we're getting through, it shows that we have been a board of action and made sure that we were looking out for the best interests of the students, faculty, and taxpayers. So, I agree with what you said and I appreciate it.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the only comment I would have to add to this is I think the last couple of years, we've had more cooperation and coordination and collaboration with the town than we had before. So, not only we, I think we're doing excellent as a district, but I think working with the town has been much better.
Yeah, I just wanted to say real quickly, you know, I have a daughter at the Belmonte and I can only speak to that experience, but our communication has been like top-notch. I mean, Dr. Lukey has hit it out of the park in terms of communicating with us. I'm glad that she's here to hear it because it's really made a huge difference. And I've heard that from other parents, to be able to just get these like small messages like tomorrow's a half-day or, you know, we had a lockdown drill or just to be kept up with the daily happenings and getting information from the PTO and that type of thing has been really amazing. So, you know, if there's any kind of rumblings that we're not getting good communication from our principals, I know that at the vets and at the high school, there's lots of praise in terms of parent and administration connection. So, and it's a second what you all said about communication from Mr. Hashem, it's been really great. So, I'm really excited to see where the rest of this year goes in terms of, you know, keeping up that communication. It's been really splendid. So, thank you very much for the hard work because I know it's another level of things to have to do at the end of a very long day. So, it's appreciated.
I just want to close out, I just want to thank Mr. Hashem. We're kind of the, school committees are kind of the complaint department. You don't hear a lot of good sometimes, but if there's a problem, you hear it. I've heard nothing but good things. In the time you've been here, you filled our meetings with students, you brought kids back into the process. It's been wonderful. There's been so much communication, your newsletters. Do you write your own trivia? Is that, you do that as well? I just want to point that out, that's really something. And the fact that I start hearing, you know, compliments about that process is not something that we're used to hearing. So, thank you so much for that and Dr. Lukey also, not to single out anyone else, but you know, when you start hearing people, you're afraid it's a complaint, then you're like, oh, it's not, it's a good thing. So, that's wonderful. So, thank you as well.
Thank you. So, moving on to the report of the acting superintendent.
All right, thank you. And I do want to, I'll piggyback too, I wasn't going to mention this, but I just wrote it down. All of the principals are doing a great job and I know everybody has their unique experience, but I think as far as what the principals are doing this year to try to communicate and try to be proactive with everything, and that's what I'm, the two points I have are along that line and because I do feel communication is important. Today, in conjunction with the police department, we conducted lockdown drills at all three schools. It was, it went very well. The principals and their administrative teams were involved them at various levels. At some schools, the principals were able to be a part of it. At some, at another school, the principal was actually in the lockdown themselves. So, it was, it was a good, it was a good time to try to do that. We're looking to do that so that it's not an abrupt shock to anyone. I know that when we were doing them last year, I was hearing like concerns that it was happening and this and that. I think this year, the nice thing is even after they happened, I think the principals communicated it out that it was a drill. I think the students and the families realize that we're doing these drills and that we're doing these drills for the safety and security of all the staff and the students and all the families involved. So, we're doing these drills and it's not a got-your-moment type of thing. What it is, is a chance for us and the police department to evaluate our process and our protocols and everything and try to, you know, debrief afterwards. I know I sent you as a group an email and that's the email that we also sent out to the faculty as well to let them know that we are working with administration and the police department to try to refine it and make it better. Because like I said, it went well today, but we can always have fixes and we can always be safer. So, there's that. We also have coming up here within a week or two, a construction project out front in the, what I would call the front courtyard area that's been, had some challenges with water. So, that's to put it mildly. So, they came in today, the construction team, and I forget the name of it, I apologize, but me, Dr. Lukey, and Steve Napolitana met with them. He's sitting actually on meetings with the construction company, but they came down to watch. I know drop-off, I don't know if they were here for pickup because they wanted to get an idea of what the flow would be. And so, we're working out the plans. It could be a two-month or three-month process because they're going to kind of fence it off and work around us. So, there might be a time where they have to do one or two days and then step back for, because they need a Saturday to come in and do some major things. So, they're going to work around it. Dr. Lukey is aware, she's going to message it to the students and the families once we get the whole game plan out. And that way, you know, nobody, I know it's going to be a change, drop-off's going to be a little bit more, you know, congested or cluttered or confusing, but we are working with everybody involved, including the police, to try to make it as smooth as possible and at the same time, make the courtyard look like what we deserve it to look like as opposed to what it is sitting right now. So, and again, we're working with the town to do that. So, I agree that the collaboration between the town, whether it's the town of Saugus itself or the police and fire, I think that collaboration's been excellent.
Excellent, thank you. Moving on to new business, we're going to have the MCAS presentation for results of 2023, MCAS testing and accountability. We'll first do an overview of the district.
All right, I don't want to steal, and I'm going to try not to steal anybody's thunder here, so I know they have slideshows. I sent to you either earlier this week or I sent to you a Google slideshow that has probably 60, 65 slides on it. That's a lot of information, you're not going to hear all that tonight because you can look it over, if you have questions, I let you know, just, you know, reach out to me and I can try to get you the answers and explanations of how we're game planning that. There are two slides within that slideshow. One, I think, is slide 26, which is what's being projected up on the screen. It's a link to the Belmonte's presentation tonight. And I think slide number four is a link to the complexes slideshow tonight. So, we'll go there. I do want to say the couple of the global elements that are worthy of note is that there are no schools in the district, nor is the district right now, no longer in need of us recognize this need, in need of assistance by DESI. So, that's, that's something that was pre-pandemic that we were in, we've kind of gone out of that, which is a good thing. All three schools have been noted for making moderate progress towards the target areas. And again, I'm not going to, if you go through the data and you want to go through the data in detail, please do, you're going to find that there's highs, there's lows, there's lots of room for improvement, there's lots of room for growth. I'm not going to say we're there, but we're trending now in a positive direction. And there are a couple of really positive areas where we grew that I'm sure one of the principals is going to point out. So, again, without stealing their thunder, I'll leave it at that. I do think one of the big elements that we have going for us right now is the use of the highly, high-quality materials. I think having those curriculum and instruction systems in place are leading us down the right path. And I do want to thank, you know, it's a complete team effort. It's the teachers, it's the support staff, it's everybody involved, but there are some people who, the instructional coaches, so I'll name them out, Andrea, Jess, Goshia, Kristen, and Tracy, they're all doing an amazing job working with teachers and trying to get these new resources into the classrooms and work with, you know, the vendors and everybody that needs to be worked with in order to allow our teachers to do that work and to integrate that curriculum that matches the standards and the way the testing works. So, they're doing an amazing job, as are Dawn Trainer and Sue Turbin. They're working together as a really tight-knit team to make sure that all students are getting access to the high-quality materials. And the principals, I really credit the principals that are involved. I know, you know, I know Dr. Lukey wasn't the Belmonte principal last year, but she was an assistant principal at the middle school. Ms. Monto and Mr. Sullivan are all working, again, with their teams and teachers and the coaches to make this happen. So, this is not, this is not one element working, it's a team, it's a complete team effort. And I give them all the credit in the world for doing it because it's not easy. I've come from the curriculum area and it's not an easy, you know, push, but they're in the trenches working with staff every day and I really appreciate everything they do. So, they don't get a shout-out enough, they, again, get the phone calls when things aren't going well, but they've done an amazing job working with the teachers, as have the teachers and support staff. So, I do want to thank them all. And I'll turn it over to the Belmonte and Dr. Lukey.
Mr. Chairman, just one thing, could you mention the last names of the four cultures for the public?
Yeah, Andrea Wheeler, Jess Manuel, Kristen Barclay, and Tracy Rigucci.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Are they here tonight?
Tracy, I saw Tracy.
Oh, and Goshia.
Yep.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Are they, are they all here tonight? I'm sorry, I didn't see all of you.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you so much.
Great job.
Dr. Lukey, you're up.
Thank you for the opportunity to present the MCAS scores tonight for the Belmonte STEAM Academy. I'll be going through the slides and give you an opportunity for any questions at the end of the presentation. But as you know, I am the Belmonte STEAM Academy interim principal. However, I have spent, like Mr. Hashem said, the past 22 years in different capacities in the Saugus Public Schools. And I would like to introduce my vice principal, Ms. Taylor DePisa. She was the dean last year, now the VP. And Taylor is not new to Saugus, she went through the school system and taught third grade, and she was a student of mine as well. So, it is a pleasure to have her by my side tonight. We're going to just click that, yeah, okay. So, I just wanted to give you just the main key points of as far as MCAS goes, we're looking for improvement in teaching and learning, school and district accountability and student accountability. And I need you to know it's a super team effort between our teachers. We've had our tremendous coaches at the Belmonte with Tracy Rigucci and Kristen Barclay, who have really stepped up and helped us, Ms. Sue Turbin, Dawn Trainer, obviously Mr. Hashem with all of our support have come together and we're really looking to go forward, looking at the whole child and considering all factors when you're looking at test scores. And to understand, even as a parent, it's good to understand these major categories. I know we had sent out letters so they could, all families could see individual scores, but exceeding expectations are students that are performing at this level have exceeded grade level by demonstrating mastery in the subjects, and that's 530 to 560. The meeting expectations are students that perform at this level are meeting grade level expectations and are on track to succeed. Partially meeting is an area 470 to 499, and that's students who perform at this level have partially met grade level but are still are working in progress. And then not meeting expectations, they currently are not performing at this level in the particular subject, but again, we're still working and growing and supporting each other to keep students moving, moving along. This slide is really an overview for you to see, this is grades three, four, and five. And as an overall scale, you can see that this is an ELA specifically for English Language Arts. We are falling just below the state average. You can see that's the blue line and you can kind of see how that's gone over the years. So, you can even say the most recent 2022 to 2023, but you can kind of see how that's going. And again, areas of improvement, a lot of our kids right now may be in the partially meeting expectations and moving into meeting expectations, and we want to keep that going. So, that's for English Language Arts overall. And the next slide is math. And the math, again, it's just good to see that visual of how over the years where we're going. And again, we've kind of dipped and then went up and don't forget, we've had the pandemic and it's just been different changes that have been happening throughout the year. So, we're kind of just a tiny bit below the state average there in math. And then in science, we're kind of moving a little bit above. As you can see, the blue line is right over that black line of state average. So, so again, it's just giving you those visuals, seeing areas that we can keep working and continuing, but we want to break it down by grade. If you can go to the next slide. So, this is for Language Arts, so in grade three. So, for grade three, we actually were above the state average in meeting expectations. That's the green section there, that's 41%. The state average on the right side is 37%. So, for Saugus, we actually were in that level and then on the yellow that you can see, for Saugus, we were above state average, 42%, and just below the state average, we were just above because the state average is 40%. So, it's kind of good to see that visual. And then for the not meeting expectations, we're 15% and the state was 16%. So, you can see how the differences are there. As far as math goes for grade three, as far as the meeting expectations, we were there at the 35% and just above the state on the right side is 33%. So, Saugus, and then for the partially meeting expectations, you can see that number 39% for Saugus and 39% for the state. So, you can see how even those are. Not meeting expectations in the red was for 19% for Saugus and 20% for the state average. So, just an overall picture there of our glows, the positives for grade three, meeting the average in these blue sections, you can see that's above the state average or just at the stage average. So, actually in every category for Language Arts for grade three, we were in that blue category. And for math, the categories for math, we were in, all of them were either at state average or above. But again, there's still more room for growth, but it's still identifying where we're at and it gives us a good visual of what, where we're going. Grade four, as far as the meeting expectations, we were a little bit below, this was in Language Arts. We're 30%, 34% was a little bit higher, the state was a little bit higher. In our partially meeting group, you can see in that big, the yellow section there, we're 52%. We had a big chunk of kids in there for Saugus, which was above the state average, 43%. And obviously, our goal is to keep moving over to the meeting expectations. And below, not meeting expectations, 16 and 17, so pretty similar with Saugus versus the state. Then the grade four math, again, we have some work to do there. 28% for meeting expectations for Saugus and 30%, 37% for the state average. And you can see how on Saugus on the partially meeting, we had 53% and this is grade four math, whereas for the state had 37%. So, you can kind of see the trends and see how these are going and it really kind of gives us a good, clear picture. As far as our grows and areas of growth for grade four, in which I know we're working on with our curriculum and our coaches, we have three out of five of the categories are state average and above state average there, and the other two are a little bit below. And that's for the math and the language arts on the bottom, the two of the areas of growth there. And then one, which was really a language and writing, which was our above state average. So, grade five, we actually, we 35% and 36%, so we're really kind of pretty close there for Saugus and the state average for meeting expectations. You can see the exceeding expectations are a little bit smaller, so we want to keep going that direction as well. In partially meeting, 53% for Saugus and 46% for the state. So, Saugus is on the left and the state is on the right. So, you can kind of see the differences. The glows here for grade five math, four out of five of the categories in math were above the state average. And then there's still work to do and it really gives us specifics about how we're moving these students as well. So, there are some celebrations there as well. And for Language Arts, 53% was in our partially meeting, that's the yellow, 32% was in the green for meeting expectations. And you can see on the state side, 39% were just a little bit above in the meeting expectations, but we were high on our partially meeting expectations for 53%. And then the, again, the meeting expectations were kind of pretty close and our exceeding expectations, we're still working to move that with enriching our students to get into those level as well. So, we're going for the greens and the blues. Yeah. Science and technology, these are some positives because we did get above, we were above the meeting expectations, we were above the state, so 35 versus 33. And then the partially meeting, we were 42 versus 40 on the right for the state. And you can see the not meeting, 17% for us and 19% for the state. So, that you can see the differences and you can see the areas that we need to take a close look at and keep on working. And being a STEAM school, we are really focusing on science and technology and math, and we've included our arts component as well. So, and I'll talk to you a little bit more about that. Great, so here is just a visual, two of the grows, these are areas of growth for us, for ELA and science, but ELA on the top, we're going to, we did okay for our reading, we were at the state average there and above. But then a couple of the categories we have to keep working on for Language Arts. For science, we're kind of two, two strong ones there for science, science and engineering and life sciences, and there's some areas where we have to keep working in the science category as well. This is what I was just mentioning, our STEAM Academy, we are really focusing on incorporating our arts in with our engineering, technology, science, and math. And brain research really talks a lot about how important incorporating music and art is for really kind of focusing on the whole child. And it's, research has shown it really helps different schools. So, we have been lucky to really add on to that department as well. Our action plan includes both Taylor and I have been in classrooms doing administrative walkthroughs, really being visible and giving feedback to teachers. We have our weekly common planning on Wednesdays for our early release, which has been very productive, and our coaches have really helped lead that with the support of Sue Turbin. So, that's, that's been incredible help. We're working on eye-ready, we're giving more opportunities for reading, progress monitoring for our DIBBLES, for reading fluency. And our daily common planning, daily, teachers have time to be able to meet and talk with each other and kind of look at where students are at. And I personally, and Taylor sure as well, both of us are observing, teachers engaged and focused in wanting to find ways to really support our students. We also have incorporated our Title I teachers have come in and really looking at the data and figuring out where it is where we can help support students. Our other area that we continue to work on to implement the high-quality instruction is our wit and wisdom curriculum, which, again, our Language Arts coach, Kristen and Susan have really helped us in getting that in and supporting our teachers. And teachers are beginning to embrace that, this is our second year, so that we're starting to see some, some really good changes there. And Tracy Rigucci has helped us with our Envision 2.0 math, and this is current, our 2024 version. When, again, we're continuing to work on our enrichment opportunities, we have Project Lead the Way.
Almost on cue.
Yeah, right, right on time, Mr. Pomarini and Trudy Williamson. We go in classes and kids are on hands building and working on projects and kids are excited and so it's been really exciting to see that grow. I talked about the focus on fine art and the arts and we're looking to have some presentations, music presentations to bring parents in to see kids singing and using instruments and things like that. We do have our art teacher also on board with helping us help to put out some student work. So, that's going on there. And the other thing, we've put in our second step program and that's been with the support with Susan Turbin. Over the years, I've been, I've been part of the social emotional learning in the district and it's something I'm super passionate about for kids. So, this is now our wellness teachers, which we were able to add in our phys ed department, are teaching our second step program and have made it a priority to align with the state standards in really getting our second step wellness, emotional well-being and really being aware of what the needs are for students for them to succeed. And I did, as you know, the Girls on the Run program, that is a social emotional learning program as well, but really just giving kids a sense of belonging and a positive self-image is really the goal of the program and that has been successful as well. So, that's kind of our plan and we're going to keep working. And again, I can't thank enough the support for myself coming in new with the transition. enough the support from myself coming in new with the transition. And we've had, teachers are doing a tremendous job, along with all of our support staff, coaches and the support of our superintendent too. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This is, uh, this is great. Is this, this part of thought you sent us?
Yeah, if you, if you look at the PowerPoint that I sent, what I did is try to give you all the district data. I broke things down and each principal put a slideshow within that. So if you have any problems, I could talk you through it, but it's, this is a link on one of the slides. This I think is slide 26.
Well, as I look at it, I think we're right there, right? Because partially meeting, we're always over the state average. So and most of the other ones, most of them, the state average, we're over. So I think we're, we're, we're right there, right on the cusp. So great job, guys.
Can I just say one thing? Just to that visual that you had with the, the STEAM Academy examples, just very quickly, three things. My daughter built a battery with a potato with Mr. Pomerini. She did a self-portrait in art using a mirror in front of herself. And she came home yesterday and told me that she now knows how to beatbox. So we really are seeing these different categories being taken advantage of to Dr. Lukey's point. So.
Excellent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I got a couple of questions. Well, first of all, congratulations. Considering where we came from the pandemic and how the kids all fell back six months or more, on average, actually growing during that time period is excellent. So, you know, I don't think it shows the total impact you guys have had. You know, I think it's been more than that. But the one question I have is I've always wondered, you know, when we went to the free school system, we were hoping that the leveraging and the best practices and the communications within the same grades with the teachers and the powers all in the same building. Do you see the positive impact of that during these sessions you have on Wednesdays?
Yes, the collaboration has been outstanding. And I, I think it is bringing all these schools together. It does give them an opportunity to kind of all get on the same page. So I, I do see the benefit of that for sure. And I, I think the time that's being used during the, the Wednesday early release, I know can be difficult at times for parents, but just to reassure you, the teachers are working, coaches are in with them, myself, Mr. Pezer, and we're, we're going around and we're checking with our data leaders. And the communication is really, I have to give them all the credit. They're doing amazing.
Mr. Chair, I just want to piggyback up on that. The one thing that is, is huge with that is, it used to be, there was a time where in order for you to get the nine or 10 second grade teachers together, the only time that was possible was on a half day or a full day. And to be honest with you, that would be one or two times a year. And there would be people who don't even necessarily know each other, teaching the same. Now they're literally in the same hallway with the, with the kids. So I think that's a huge advantage. And that was an, that was a huge reason why we went with that model. Cause it was something as a, as a former high school principal, I didn't really have to worry about that because all my teachers were together and they were always together. And yes, PD time was a time for them to have extra time, but at least they knew each other. I mean, it's really nice to see all of the teachers at the grade levels having the same equipment, having the same space, having the same equitable resources and also being to get physically together. I think that goes a long way.
Right. And for students, just to know, I wanted to say, coming from the middle school model too, myself, we, we have pods. So if you envision, there's nine classrooms in each grade, but they're broken up into groups of three pods, like the teams of teachers are working together. And I've seen that working really well to really break it down and make it small for the kids too. So they, they're aware of their pods, the teachers are communicating. And then they'll come together as a big group as well, but, but setting that up that way is kind of like a small team model that has really, I've seen the benefit of that as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Great job. Coaches, great job. Thank you. Even you, Tracy.
Now we have Mr. Sullivan and Mrs. Monto for the Sogus Middle High School complex.
Good evening. Just wait for Ms. Turbin to change the slide.
She's there.
Don't rush her.
And we're there. Look at that. All right. Thank you very much. So Mrs. Monto and I reviewed the data, the coaches working with us, helping us analyze the data. In the interest of time and going through and my love of speaking, they said I can do most of the talking, but Mrs. Monto will also contribute in it. So one of the things I want to point out is with the middle high school, with grade six to 12, in the spring, in the spring of 2023, we're giving 10 different MCAS exams between English, math, science, and we're giving exams from sixth grade through 10th grade. And that's not counting the retakes that we do with some high school students in the fall. So you're talking over a thousand students on multiple days throughout the spring. So just the undertaking alone is tremendous and it is a full team effort. Every person in that building contribute to it. And we didn't put it on there because we're really focusing on the student achievement data and the growth. But one thing that we are very, very proud of, all those exams, all those kids, we have a 98, 99% participation rate. So the assistant principals, the teachers, they chase down kids who miss a day of exams and get them in there and get them to take it. It's really important to us that everybody takes this. So that is something that we are very proud of. With that, we want to just, we're not going to run through each of those 10 tests individually. Instead, we're going to do a few of our highlights and then a couple of areas of growth and our plan moving forward. I'm always willing to come back and talk to all of you. So if there's more questions, I'll come back. But one thing, we had three students who got perfect scores in the MCAS. So we're very excited about that. Students and their families are very excited. Hopefully, we have permission from everybody in the near future to publicize it and bring them into the meeting. But letters were officially going out recently. So, you know, we wanted families to have their moments first. All right. So in our glows, one thing that we are very proud of are our 10th grade math scores. So over the last two years, between 21 and 202023, we've seen an 11% increase in proficiency. That's students getting exceeding or meeting expectations. So now in 2023 of our 10th graders, that was 45% of them. 2021, that class, it was 34%. That is a huge increase over those years. And it's something that we're very, very proud of. Similarly, our eighth grade math scores, last year, we saw great growth, right? Higher scores last year, but the thing that we're really keying in on, the part that makes us so proud is our student growth percentile, where you examine how a student grows year over year. So you're comparing the student to themselves and how their growth is going. In our eighth grade math class, our average student growth percentile was 71%.
Wow.
So that means our eighth graders in math are just making tremendous progress. So it's excellent if a student is moving from, you know, meeting expectation to advance, but that also means we have a lot of students moving out of not meeting expectation into partially meeting expectation. And we look at these trends, we can see how eighth grade is built upon in ninth grade and 10th grade, so that this is keeping the momentum moving forward.
And that's important to mention also that it's just not a testament to the eighth grade math teachers. It's also, it's accumulative, sixth and seventh grade as well, and the special ed teachers.
And if we look, we also highlight our ELL students and our former ELL students in eighth grade, their growth percentile is 62%. Again, way above the state average. 10th grade English, another area that we are very happy with. We have an 8% increase in proficiency. Our scaled score, the raw scores, on average, are three points higher this year than they were last year. And our student growth percentile is just above 50%. So it's higher than the state average. So we're very, very happy with the growth we're making. Similar to what we were talking about a moment ago with eighth grade ELL students in math, in 10th grade, in both ELA and math, one of the subgroups that you take a look at are students with 504s and students on IEPs. All right? And what we've seen over the last four years is huge steps forward with more and more students in 10th grade with IEPs and 504s meeting proficiency. And we've had huge gains in this area. And we've increased the number of those students in the exceeding categories. So if you look, those are year over year in English and math. I know it's hard to see from there, but the blue, the light blue and the dark blue increasing, that's what we want and that's what we're seeing. That is a testament to the incredible work being done by our classroom teachers, the content teachers in those disciplines, the special education teachers working with them, the paraprofessionals working with them, the students themselves and the families. Because what we've been doing is we have been moving more and more students into the inclusion setting, out of small group math, out of small group English, into inclusion, into a general education class with, you know, 20, 23 other students in there with special education supports. And that can be, you know, that's scary in times when people meet with parents and students and they talk about it. But we assure them that it's for the best, that they'll have support. You know, our ETLs do a great job of really explaining the benefits from it. And we are seeing the educational gains and our students are thriving. And we're very, very excited about that. All right. So there are obviously also areas that we're looking to grow in. Math in sixth and seventh grade, we're not seeing yet the growth that we would like. And we'll talk in a minute about what we're doing and how we know that growth is coming. But sixth and seventh grade math, along with seventh, eighth, sixth, seventh and eighth grade English. Again, we're not yet seeing the growth that we want to see in those subjects, but we're taking steps that I'll talk about in a moment to move us in that right direction. So our action plan is pretty straightforward. We've been doing a lot of implementation of high quality instructional materials. Carnegie math is, if you want to move.
I'm going to.
Yeah. So in math, we have Carnegie math from Algebra I all the way through, excuse me, from sixth grade all the way through Algebra II. So that is a unified math system that's going with students from sixth grade all the way through 10th, 11th grade. And it's challenging. It's rigorous. And teachers are now in their third year, the coaches, the curriculum department have done an excellent job of providing support in really being in classrooms with teachers and helping them to do this. And we're seeing those gains. And as we continue to do this, those gains will keep coming. No, we keep going. In English, we implemented partway through last year, wit and wisdom in grade six, seven and eight. It's a tough adjustment to implement a new curriculum in the middle of the school year. The English department did an excellent job of adapting and working really hard to do that. This year, right, they're in their first full year of it. They get to start the year with it. And as an added bonus, you have students coming in from the fifth grade who have been doing wit and wisdom. And all of our other middle school students have some experience. So again, a high quality instructional material with great support. And we believe this is going to lead to those stronger results that we're looking for.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I'm sorry, when was that implemented, the wit and wisdom?
Last year, they did modules one and two.
No, halfway through the year last.
Okay. I'm just curious because of the timing of the MCAS. So it was right around mid-year? Okay.
What I was going to say is that this is a three to five year growth. You'll see it within years three and five of the implementation of wit and wisdom. And we've already seen our fifth graders that have come in and have been tested, their benchmark test scores have been higher than previous years. So that's really good news.
So one of the things we just put up there is, Mrs. Monto and I really just want to take a moment and thank the coaches. Having the instructional coaches at the secondary level really has made just a tremendous difference. Their ability to go in, particularly in these, you know, content areas, English and math, where we're trying to move in an ELL and go in and follow their cycle of improvement and work directly with teachers. They are teachers themselves. They're veterans in the district. They have the respect of their peers. And it's really just been a tremendous asset for us. Move to the next slide. And so we really are just focused on supporting those coaches and maintaining a high functioning coaching team at the secondary level. Cause it really does contribute to that culture of professional learning and high expectations that we have for staff and students. One thing that we're really focusing in on at the middle school level is our seventh period extra learning block. We've been having lots of conversations with the coaches, with superintendent and the curriculum director, Ms. Turbin, about this time. We've been implementing more there, but we really are going to try and use that time to make some significant gains in middle school MCAS to get students up to grade level. From a high school perspective, that's great because the, the better off they come out of middle school, the better the results we see at the high school. So we'll be talking more about that and messaging more about that to families and students in their future. And that's it?
Wow, that was informative.
I always have questions.
I want to mention one more. Today, Ms. Turbin came to us and she had, was very excited. Okay. And was really excited to share this, that she had received this morning at around eight o'clock, an email from a district local to us who was analyzing the MCAS data and wanted to know what the eighth grade teachers were doing in math. They were so impressed with the, the results that they had seen that they want to come, they want to talk to us and see what we're doing. So kudos to our teachers in that area. And we went and talked to them about it today and gave them that, that good news. So I wanted to share that.
Congratulations. That's awesome.
Thank you.
A couple of things. Obviously, great job for you guys, just like the, the Monty. But one of the things I was interested in, and it may be too early to tell, fifth graders going to sixth grade, it used to be kind of dramatic for 75% of the kids because they only knew 25% of the kids in their class, you know, because they had four schools going into one. I was just wondering if you see a transition from fifth grade to sixth grade? Is it easier for the kids going to the sixth grade now, now that we're all in the same, same schools?
I would say yes. I, I think that they, they know each other's faces, if not their names. So there's a comfort level there. Yes. And they're all, and I really liked what Dr. Lukey had talked about with the different pods, making the, the bigger group into smaller little pods, so that they do feel a sense of community. And that's what we do at the middle school as well. So I was pleased to hear that.
Yep. And then the last question I had was, was kind of just jumped in my head. Do we have high school students mentoring or tutoring the middle school students?
So last spring, and it was really, it's something we've been talking about, but we had teachers who really led the charge. Last spring, and middle school and high school teachers working together to organize. And we had high school students on the middle school side of the building during times of the day, helping with that. So Mrs. Monto and I have been talking, that's something that we want to start up again as we get into the school year a little bit more. Cause we really think it is beneficial for both sets of students, the high school students. You know, they always say you don't really know something until you teach it. And, you know, it's an extra person to help those middle schools. So it is something we're interested in continuing.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just want to piggyback one more thing off.
Mr. Chair, I just want to piggyback one more thing off what Mr. Gould said, as far as the transition from fifth to sixth grade. Everybody who ever came into a middle school, junior high, that was usually an abrupt transition. Even in my own life, I remember it distinctly. But the one thing that I do think, and it goes a long way towards the design of the building, which Mrs. Monto had a big part of, was we finally got the middle school pods designed in the way that a middle school would want to do instruction. So while you look at that building, it's massive, we had a few parents in the spring that were reluctant or nervous to send their kids, or their kids were nervous. When you go into the sixth grade pods, even though you're in this huge, vast building, your world of education is fairly small, and in fact, smaller than it was when it was a middle school that was a repurposed junior high school. So I think the design has made a big building seem small in spaces, and that goes a long way towards their transition.
Great job. I, this, just, you know, it echoes back to, I think, what I was talking about at the beginning, the teamwork between everyone in the district, between the superintendents, the principals, the coaches, even down to the support staff in the schools. And, you know what, I, for one, am really proud of you guys. I really am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to thank everyone for their presentations, and Bill, sit around after, I want to learn how to make a battery out of a potato, if you're free. The thing that this always reaffirms for me is that this is a snapshot that's, what, six months old? And, like you said, we were just coming out with a new curriculum right around the time, so now we're, you know, six months removed from that. So as we go into next year, we're going to have time to bake this all in, so this is a moving target. So I'm looking forward to that, and just thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, I too want to thank everybody, but I just want to point out something, and that is, we constantly talk about moving the district forward and forward growth. This demonstrates forward growth. This demonstrates the teamwork and the hard work that our classroom teachers, as well as the coaches, are putting in with their support to get this growth moving. And I don't want anybody to leave this meeting without acknowledging that this district is moving forward, there is growth, and it's a credit to every educational professional that works in the system.
Excellent. Thank, once again, thank you. Moving on, acceptance, acceptance of donations from the Andover Companies for 60 unopened Chromebooks for donation. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Chair, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Cast is 5-0. From Shutterfly Life Touch, $1,991.62 to Sargus Middle School.
Motion to approve.
Chair, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed trip to Spain and Portugal.
Mr. Lavoy is not here, but he has decided, out of the goodness of his heart, I think, to do another European trip. It's scheduled for Spain and Portugal for 2025. They're going on a trip this spring, and I think it's to the Netherlands, I want to say Belgium, might be France. I apologize, that I don't know. But this one is a Spain and Portugal trip for the next year. So it's the same logistics, I believe it's the same company, the same process. He just wants your approval to do that, so that he can get started on it, get the best rates for the students who can go.
Absolutely. I think we can approve it, but I'd like him to come in and discuss it.
Okay.
You know, I think, I'd feel more comfortable if he could come in and talk about it, so.
Yeah, but, I was just going to say, but yeah, to give him the permission to at least get going.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr., I'll make the motion, Mr. Chair, and I know every time he comes in, the one thing, obviously, the world changes every day. The company that we've always used has really good support built in. If something happens, if we need to move a trip, move out of this country.
Yeah, like I said, I'd just like to have him.
Absolutely.
Talk about it. Chair, seconds. Do a roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next, we go to public comment. Obviously, public comment is, you can only discuss what we had on the agenda today, so. Bill? Nothing today? We didn't forget anything?
You can teach that potato thing while you're up.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
It's not really, it's not really public comment, but if you're not going to the SBC trivia tournament tonight, it's a beautiful night. Girl soccer has a big game tonight and tomorrow night. Hopefully, we have some more good weather. Field hockey has a big game tomorrow night. So if you're at home watching, you want to get out and enjoy the fall, we get some great games coming up.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
And the girls, tonight is also senior night.
Correct.
So if you get there, if you get there at 6:30, you can see the senior night.
Excellent.
Motion to adjourn?
Chair, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.